Any additions or subtracts? I know it's a long time. And all in favor of approving the agenda as written, if I say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, so the minutes, you have the minutes for the March 13th and March 18th. Any questions, corrections?
I make a motion to approve both sets of minutes for both the 13th and the 18th.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, if I say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any vote?
I would have seen, I wasn't at the one meeting, I guess that was the...
13th?
13th. 18th.
18th. So one, two.
I guess I was going to ask our council, Mark, how does it, at the meeting on the 13th, can I make a motion to approve the agenda?
Yeah. On the mayor's report, I wanted to open tonight by just saying a few words about resident of the town of Austin, so last meeting Chuck Hunter. He was certainly a fixture of the town. I remember the first time I met him, he was down at the corner store where he used to work, and I felt like he already knew me when I walked in, or knew more about me than I knew about the town or the county. And certainly, the last time I saw him, when he was, of course, working in his garden in the corner of Manhattan, I think so many of us got used to seeing him throughout the spring and summer. There has been a, one, I want to thank the Solomons for hosting the memorial service for him last weekend, which unfortunately wasn't able to attend. But there has been a movement to have a bench installed at the corner there in honor of Chuck. If anyone wishing to make donations to that, or can make a donation through the Town Washington Trust, we'll coordinate the acquisition and installation of a bench there with appropriate plaque on it. We're missing their corners, I don't know either. Certainly never, if I ever wondered if we were on track or off track to the town council, I could stop them, Chuck would be sure to let me know one way or another.
Especially if they're off track.
Especially if yes.
Oh, yeah. But car pieces.
So he would come and jump up on the wall there, inspect Al's garden and what's going on.
Yeah, car flight can do that.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Other things for the mayor's report, one, I had a plan for those who have the news to come back into town later night, the exterior lighting has finally been installed at the post office, so it actually is quite very nice, very downcast, but really good to look at, you know, the sidewalk, and it was a long time coming, but happy to see it here. Hopefully addresses the concerns of many about the ability to permanently lighten the place. And then finally, I would just once again like to, or mention the boundary line adjustment and thank, I guess, I think all of you know, of course, we've tried to move to prove our last version of the consent over, and now it'll go on to the committee on local government, Uncle David Martin, and they'll be working with the county and with the applicant's lawyers to get that into form. But I wanted to, one, thank our partners on the board supervisors for getting that over the finish line, but also thank my colleague, our esteemed vice mayor, helping getting that conversation started again just before we transitioned offices in the fall, in early winter, so.
You and I were twelve together on that.
Yeah.
The team.
It takes a village, I think someone said, or town. So glad to see that moving toward its final action and passage. So a little TBD on the timeline, depending on when the commission gets to it, but hopefully by the end of summer, we'll have some, have that all wrapped up. And I think I have to, I'll save them for the end of the night, and I think that concludes the mayor's report. Any questions? Madam Treacher?
Thank you. We have before you in this report, a couple of things to point out. First, on the wastewater budget. Don't wonder why the operating expenses are so low, because we just got our bill for our $8,000 payment on our bond, so they'll be...
I just signed it earlier today.
Okay, good, that's, that's all done. Any other questions? Just a reminder that we was in lodging tax, we worked as follows up a month behind to give us three days, establishments are thirty days. Three pairs on the water should be of no surprise to anybody, the water main break had paddles and a pump that was required, but nothing was doing, so. My question is, do you like this format? Do you like this report?
The only concern I have would be that, I assume that we're at the end of the third quarter of the year, correct?
Yes, but I have months to date.
So when we're looking, say, at April or the May, we're not going to be able to have a sense unless we do some quick calculus and or some quick mathematics in our head. We're not going to know where we are compared to the electric percentage.
No, I do, we have a year-to-date percentage, but as far as where we're going to end the year?
No, I know, but I'm talking about to try to figure out where we are in terms of what percentage of the year has passed versus the percentage that you show year-to-date at the end. Just have to do some math in our head, requires to do some things.
Uh-oh.
It's a scary concept.
I know. But we'll, we'll do that in the future.
Some drawn.
We'll do that at the general meeting, when we review the budget, the draft budget.
I kind of miss having the monthly breakdown, rather than just Q3, and I don't know which month brings what is money to spend, a lot of income came in. It's an easier way of having subdivisions?
Oh, sure.
Would make it month instead of quarter.
I can easily do...
You're just press that.
Maybe I might want to do so, actually.
No, I can easily do a monthly P and L.
That would be...
Sure. Do you want to see a month three instead of quarterly?
I mean, I don't mind having a quarters, but when I look at it, it would be helpful for me to know which month, you know, what was spent, what came in, whatever.
Yeah, we can do a P and L report by year-to-date, by month, compared to budget.
It would just be lagging month-to-month.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just speaking for myself.
No, no.
No, that's good, that's why I'm asking the question, because, you know, we just devised doing a quarterly report, and that bothered me, it's so beautiful, instead of my ugly stuff, but that's why I wanted, as we go into the next fiscal year...
What do you want to see?
What do you want to see? That's good.
Take the dashboard.
That's easy. Okay. This one there. Anybody else, any other comments for me to start cleaning for choice? Okay. Good, thanks, Gina. If you come up with anything after you look at this, just shoot me an email, but call me, Barbara. Secret source. No, I really can easily print it, year-to-date. I have a couple of motions. I think we're ready to, going to make a motion to set the public hearing for the draft budget at the May meeting. Does that have time, Barbara?
Okay. And that'll tee us up for June vote?
Yes.
So we'd be done before the...
Yes, yes. At the June meeting, we will then do the, which we can then vote on the budget. So if we could do that, that's good. And then the next, oh, I made the motion idea.
Second, so you made a motion that you want to have the...
Made a motion to advertise your public hearing at the May town council meeting.
On that, on that fiscal year.
The draft budget, at Y.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
So that's second.
I do?
All right, all those in favor?
I think I have to be that far.
Okay.
All in favor, if I say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, and I also am making a motion to release the final quarter budget, the one that we spend.
To release the fourth quarter of the twenty-two, twenty-three.
Fourth quarter of the current budget.
All second.
Aye.
All second?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you.
Good, no empty bills. That is it for me.
Mr. Krim?
Thank you, Mayor. I've been told that without the sound system, I need to project, so I'll try to project. All right, so one item to follow up on, if you already mentioned, Mayor, is the boundary line adjustment agreement, working on that, working on bringing that into a different format, instead of being a simple boundary line adjustment by agreement with circuit court approval, the idea is to do a boundary line adjustment that has to go to the commission on local government, and then to a special free judge panel for approval. The reason to do that is so that the agreement can contain zoning arrangements that would be binding on future town councils. And the zoning arrangement that's in question is to have the black kind of face two be non-residential unless and until the board supervisors agrees to the construction of residential structure. So it's a, it's a bit of a cumbersome process, but it can be done, and so we're moving forward on that. I'm very pleased to have communication from the county, Mr. Curry, and followed up with me, and so we're moving forward on that. And so I had, just so the rest of the council knows, a recent discussion with the mayor and asking about the next steps and making sure that we're taking steps appropriately and efficient now to minimize the cost to the town. Second thing I wanted to report on is, and some of you already know this as well, that last month, late last month, the Virginia Supreme Court struck down Fairfax County's zoning ordinance in its entirety because they had violated FOIA. They were operating under COVID provisions that allowed them to have meetings virtually in pursuant to statute and a policy that they adopted. And the court said, that was only for emergencies, and this is a zoning rewrite that you've been working on for five years already. So they struck it down in its entirety. Within a couple of days, Fairfax County webpage showed the old ordinance, the previous ordinance, as the ordinance in fact. The latest update on that is that Fairfax County has provided notice to the Virginia Supreme Court that they may request a motion to rehear, they may file a motion to rehear, just provided notice that that is coming. So obviously, we don't know to what extent this jeopardizes actions by other localities, particularly during COVID, but it is something to watch out for. If a COVID Freedom of Information Act violation can invalidate your council action, then that's pretty strong medicine. And ready to answer the questions?
Thanks for that cheerful music.
Do we know of any significant? Is it worth doing a study, see if there was any significant action, so that we can know the extent of the potential damage?
If it's something to do, that's one of the part, and I just have to have options to make.
Shave away that part, man. I'm going through my journal. I will expect to...
Well, and you do have to readopt things, and then we just need to be aware of that and get a little work ahead of it.
All right, Mr. Guyerson is not with us, you had his, his report in front of you, straightforward this month. Pause and answer from black cattle, but I'll let you all, if you do that, pass on any questions you might have to Mr. Guyerson. Anything from the public quarters?
Nothing significant. We, we did get the fence around the treatment plant painted, long overdue, hasn't had any tension.
And some repairs to it.
And some repairs, or just added around, yeah. I mean, it hasn't had anything done to it since it was built, so it's long overdue. They also did last little touch-up on the building, control building, so again, looks very nice. And again, it'll serve us well down the road. We have provided to Rush River a water meter that will be used by the, what, the driller that is going to set all the piles, because they did need a fair amount of water for that process, so they had asked us about putting a meter on, so we've just had an indication. So we'll just build when they're all done. And where do the ears install, ultimately that tap, if you will, is going to go away when the road is widened, but it made a convenient spot for them, so we've got that in place. I have reached out, in fact, it was today, and spoken with a former colleague of mine up in Detroit about the control system for the wastewater plant, and he told me some of things that he would need to look at, so that he could then assess the status of that system, and then we can start talking about what might be integrated going forward, and then based on that, they can give us an estimate to upgrade those controls. Because the problem is that control system in there currently is outdated, the equipment is no longer manufactured, and even trying to scrounge around places on eBay for parts to continue its life is not a good plan, so we need to do an upgrade. So that's one of the things we've been doing, and then I've also reached out regarding the water line from the pump house to the tower, and in that conversation, I was hoping that I might find a contractor who could self-perform the engineering, and he really recommended to go out and get a proper civil engineering firm to design that project. So I'll be reaching out and trying to get a couple of engineering firms to give us an idea.
Guys, do you want to do Rush River?
Yes, yes, in fact, that was the suggestion, because they were also doing Clutch Corn. So he said they're, they're very good at work with, yeah. And this contractor said, you know, I would go that direction, and he says, once you guys something, he's very happy to meet your price and do the work. So I'll be pursuing that, and then the other thing I'm going to pursue is the generator issue at the pump house. Getting a new generator quoted to us, and then get something installed, and then do that, put a few other little additions on to that that hopefully protect the pump itself to go forward. So that's where we are right now.
Thank you.
Actually, I have a question?
Yes.
Regarding the line to the reservoir from the pump house, my understanding was there's some leak, or what's the story?
Yes, somewhere back in the line, I believe before I even came to town, a leak was detected. But rather than actually finally even go repair it, the determination was, well, let's just turn that off, we have a line that runs down Harris Hollow, and we'll just let the water do it, into town that way, serve the town, and then any excess capacity, or at night, water will then go to the town. So we have a reserve, that's primarily what is serving the town, but that is not the correct way that this water system should be operating.
Now, is there any chance of discovering where the leak is and not putting a hole in line?
Well, the problem is, the line is very old, and because nothing's been going through it, it's, there may be other deteriorating points, joints and everything else, so we'd be better served to put a new line in that is plastic, using the modern plastic materials, and then we don't have to worry about it. So, and it would be seamless all the way through, so there'd be no joints, and we shouldn't have this kind of problem.
What is the composition of the old pipe?
Well, that's the trouble, I can't get anybody to give me a clear answer. It might be cast iron, it might be something else, and then someone said it was plastic, but I don't believe they were putting in plastic water lines when that line went in. So in July, when we're doing our survey of the town piping, there's three or four people together, Country Water, ESS, the town, Patriot, we're going to also bring in Mr. Price, because I believe it was his dad actually put that line in. So we're going to try and, you know, pick some brains to figure out what it was, and then roughly where it goes up there, because we do have right-of-way in these months, but there have been some change of ownership on properties, so we're going to go back and revisit those, and make sure people understand that the town has it, needs it to go through there.
Right, and did we give us to charge the line and see what happens?
I don't know if we can actually, I don't know what the pump, I mean, because you're talking, to charge the line means pushing a lot of pressure in the whole system, and seeing how our filter system is on its age, I don't want to put any undue stress on that. So I think it's just, this is part of long-term planning that we need to do, so let's get some, you know, once we get some numbers, then we can figure out where our next moves are.
I did some research and agree with that. I wish there was an easier answer.
Yeah.
Well, I suppose when we, when we think we're close to being able to walk, we can also take it up and see what's there.
Potentially, you know, anything's possible. One thing I did, to give it to Gail, I came across this site, I don't remember how I came upon it, but it consolidates, I guess you'd say, all the various funding programs within the government, so EPA, USDA, all these things, and you can just sort of figure out what you're looking for, and they will give you a rundown, you know, where to go, agencies you go to talk to. So, you know, once we have some magnitude of dollars, then we can start putting these things together and start searching out money.
Any other questions?
I guess I'll just say that we, we did do the activity of searching out the money. We did find that they will do funding, but it's a loan, it's not a grant. EPA and the state water authority, and what they do is, if you have certain, if you meet certain criteria, you can have up to, I believe it was 30% of the loan waived, and unfortunately, we will not meet any of those criteria as a community. So Steve Guyerson and I went and did, actually talked to the people up there.
Okay. And you're going down to Placis?
We're getting together with the water people, the money.
Come up close.
Yeah. They're going to come to us, we just have to set it on after we watch, there's a webinar coming up that we're all going to watch, so it's, it's on the agenda.
Okay. But I'm sure there's, there's pots of money here and there.
Yeah, yeah.
You guys don't have one side, because they have these specific programs, this side that maybe Gail just, it was amazing how many different programs.
I had to not get caught up in it. It was like going down the rabbit hole. They'll let him get down the rabbit hole, send it to her.
I'm in a rabbit hole.
Yeah.
Yeah. Put off that.
I do have my deal.
Any other questions about? No report from the planning commission, I know the architect review board did not meet, so no report from the ARB.
I have one brief update for council. At the February meeting, I believe, I talked about some concern that had come from a survey that had been done at the town boundary over on the southeast side, and that there was a discrepancy of about 200 feet. Since that meeting, we received another, from a local resident, another survey that was just done, that reinforces what all but one of the other surveys have as the town line. So I feel comfortable enough, since the one that is not, the outlier is about 70 years old, and so I'm taking that as an outlier, and I feel very confident that there's enough consensus among the other survey lines, that I don't think the town council needs to expend the funds to go research that.
So which side of the 200 people we are?
We're on the near side.
Not losing, but yeah.
Well, we did lose, we did lose 200 feet, but it's, it follows along the lines that, that we use for sewer authority when they're doing their work and everyone else.
Yeah. I think that's all the, all the mayor's reports, yes, sir.
Can I ask a follow-up question based on that survey information? If we are confident that the voting register has the correct survey on the map of the town?
I would assume that they do, but I would go ahead and go follow-up.
Please. All right, then we'll move to old business, economic development authority. We've been talking about this for a couple of months, I think we've got some draft language that has been circulated. I think I would draw your attention to the version that has the four or five term bullets at the bottom, this, this version, to sort of work from for our purposes. Mr. Krim was nice enough to draft this up, I'm not going to read it unless somebody really wants me to read it into the record, loves the sound of my voice. You know, I will leave it to you all to bruise. The only discussion, one discussion, one of the things I wanted to talk about a little bit is, we have the option, sort of below the term bullet, or of adding a, I guess, a paragraph three underneath an ordained, to provide some sort of specificity to what it is we want this development authority to do. I think the version that here has three potential things, adds a paragraph three with a sub-bullet A, B, and C, with some options for adding language to, with some direction, or show these some requests to the authority what we would like them to do. After talking with Mr. Krim earlier today, and there's some feedback I received from you all individually over the weekend, I think what we can do here is be much more general in our commentary for A and B, and say that we would like the, let's see, depending on the availability of funding, we would like the authority to... grants to encourage the redevelopment expansion of our existing smaller ends, and grants, and then the last seat remain as is. But that would give us some flexibility in how we would structure the funding of grants for those two areas, which I think will come off down. But I opened the discussion on the particular wording there. I just sketched out, sort of taking some of the, zooming out a little bit on A, and said, you know, grants.
A and B will really be a fine.
Well, you still need to keep them separate, because it's two separate issues you're dealing with. So, it's grants for, A would remain, grants for restaurants.
So, it's just establish a grant.
Right, establish. A grant.
Is "grant" the right word?
We have the flexibility, or Mr. Krim?
Yes, the Economic Development Authority has the ability to give grants to businesses.
I understand that, that's what C would do. But it seemed to me that A and B are about tax rebates, not grants.
Essentially, they are grants up to the amount of the taxes, or some percentage of the tax.
So, we can choose the wording, but it would be, in effect, the same thing, and just be calling it a grant rather than a rebate, or we can call it a rebate instead of a grant. Or, I think some of our fellow councilmen were concerned by using particular wording around rebate and grants, but that's what this is for, this is the debate, so I'll let you guys stay.
Yeah, I really like using the word grant, because that gives, that restricts it to whatever we as a town council put in our budget for the fiscal year. It gives the EDA the ability to, somebody may want a $500 grant, someone may need a $2000. So, there's, I think it gives more transparency, it's cleaner, so.
Personally, I don't like the term "grant", because it makes it sound like we're giving them money, whereas rebate makes it sound like money comes to us and we give it back. Whereas "grant" really, to me, indicates, from our pool of money, we're giving somewhere.
And that's, it's on my grid, we are. In the draft budget, we have $10,000 set aside for the EDA for grant money.
Unspecified.
Yeah, yeah, so it's unspecified. So, but, so that's not of our general income into the grant.
I, my, my only concern is that when you have the term, when you have a tax rebate, you're talking about a defined amount for each entity. If you just use the word "grant" by itself, there seems to be some arbitrariness as to what, you know, you were just mentioning that you're giving 500 to this person and 2,000, and you don't really have a set of guidelines as to what determines one or the other. So, my sense is you could use the term "branch" up to the equivalent of the tax rebate amount, or something of that.
I think what you read was up to the amount of their estimated meals and lodging tax. So, it's just eliminating the rebate and just saying.
Then I think we should have that language in.
Yeah, that's.
That's what I was.
That's right.
Yeah, that's very good.
It's, it is semantics, admittedly, and of course, the majority wants to go with the particular wording of it. But one proposed option would be to say that they may, they could do, establish grants equal to the meals and lodging tax, I should have brought my green glasses, collected during the first, uh, 24 months in each instance, to encourage the opening of new restaurants within the town. So, it is, in effect, a rebate on the meals and lodging tax, as a grant in writing.
But.
Up to, not.
Up to, or equal to, whichever way.
Whatever.
Equal to.
But I think this, you, you're, you're teetering on a balance here, because C is for, he business. Someone's gonna sell pinecone mitten, okay, so they can get up to 5,000. But if you're A or B, you could give more than that, because of what you're putting in. And I think that, I think the better approach, get away from what's collected for meals and lodging. All that revenue comes into the town. We provide the EDA a fixed amount of money. In this case, for this coming year, it's $10,000. From that, you could grant to, if someone established a restaurant, you could give a grant to someone in the lodgings spectrum, or you could give money to someone who's not working for the business. It is a grant. It is irrespective of any sales, or meals, lodging, any other taxes that are collected, of which any portion of that comes to the town. So, it would be cleaner, more even. Then you're not into this whole issue of, well, how much was this collected? How much was that collected? It comes, it comes in the county nightmare, if you're gonna start tracking amounts to figure out rebates. I think you're much wiser to simply say, whatever money is due to town, let that come in. Appropriate an X amount of money for the EDA, EDA can issue grants up to a fixed dollar amount, regardless of who you are, which business it is. I think that is gonna be cleaner.
Follow-up on that. Mr. Mayor, might I suggest that, and Mr. Krim, I'm gonna need your guidance on this. If you set up the EDA tonight, could you have it as the responsibility of the EDA at its first mission, its first meeting, to set up specific guidelines, and then bring those back to the town council for their approval before they get implemented?
So, you could, you haven't appropriated any money to them yet, so, because they don't exist yet.
Until July, July.
Well, so, yeah, the earliest, adopting draft budget, then that would be their own money from the town, and they could get money from other sources. But in terms of the sense of, you know, there's resolutions, a sense of Congress, the sense of the council would be that they want, you want them to come back with a set of guidelines for how they would appropriate this money. And I can provide, have provided some forms that other EDAs have used for that purpose. A point system, so many points for capital improvements, so many points for jobs created, and so on. And so, that could be a way to go, so that they have, at their first meeting to, or first couple of meetings, to adopt some guidelines for how they would propose to spend money, send that to council, and have the councils then turn around and say, yes, we're gonna appropriate money for this purpose. That happens all the time. EDAs get proposals in, they suggest that their council, their councils fund it, and then the council agrees to fund it.
And so, if we were to go that route, and the members were appointed, the members could meet, go through all these discussions, come up with these guidelines, and have them before the council, even before the July 1st, when the EDA goes into effect?
Well, so you would want to create an EDA now so they can legally meet.
Exactly, exactly.
But they wouldn't have a budget.
Before the budget goes into effect.
Right, what's the answer?
I have a question, please. Are Airbnbs included in this proposal? Okay, and under the ordinance, is a B and B allowed to have more than seven rooms?
By special needs, I'm not.
I see. So, I just was curious as to why seven or less rooms, establishments, transient lodging, businesses with seven or less rooms, how that was determined?
I have to put up a couple of ordinance, I think.
Is there a new ordinance?
No, it's in the, it's in the.
There was six rooms allowable for a B and B.
Yes, and the one particular that has seven rooms got an S U P.
This is a what?
This is from back in my memory here. But when they turned the little house behind it, you know, into a seventh room, that was, I'm 99% sure that was an S U P.
Which establishment was that?
Well, it's playing music.
So, I've got to do some research in that, but that's what I believe.
Does that mean because that establishment has more than seven rooms, it's not qualified?
No, that made it seven rooms. That one over the six rooms.
That's where the number seven came from, versus the six. I see. So, I was curious that there's only one establishment that has, will not qualify. Just pointing it out for the record. I was curious about.
We can go a little bit further, I'm just trying to encourage the small businesses.
This gets into a question about other, this gets into a question about the impact on the base budget. This is going down, sort of where Gene was going, and the potential provisions here. So, you could separate, I would argue, and in previous versions that I've discussed with many of you, we included that for restaurants and for other large establishments in town, shall we say, that are capable of expanding or would add revenue to the town budget, that it is, in fact, revenue neutral for the town to do a tax rebate for those, for those businesses. Because what you're saying is, hey, I'm gonna do, it's my money that I'm gonna realize, right? Like, it's not money that's in our current projected budget. You know what our base budget is, we're pretty comfortable there. We can have a small surplus this year, it looks like, we have lots of expenses. So, you could argue, so you could argue that both the restaurant and, should we choose to add a B or a C or D, or insert a second, I would argue, a B, just if we're gonna talk about rebates, if you inserted something like that, that it is essentially revenue neutral to the town. Because what we're saying is, if you are willing to open a new restaurant here, or you're willing to expand your large business here, then we wanna, you know, encourage that. For the first 12 months or 24 months of your operation, we're going to provide you a tax rebate to encourage you to invest in your business.
For that part of the expansion.
For that part of the expansion.
So, it seems to me that, I think I agree where you're going. It seems like we should take out that phrase, insisting on seven or less rooms.
I think what we do is.
Well, I think you could create, you could create two separate categories.
I think what we do is, we don't discuss this, this section any further. I think we create the EDA, and the EDA takes all of this in the comments, and they come back to us with what they propose their guidelines be, as opposed to us.
And which, I think, which Fred was saying before. It seems to me there's three issues. One, we want to elevate it all. And two, about membership, it's gonna be our end for our terms. And then three, the guidelines, which seems sensible to have the people on and pay the sum.
That's a perfectly good point.
So, the first thing that comes to us then is to approve the EDA. And if we could take out number three.
Number three.
Yeah, number four. Then I'm happy to move for that ordinance, understanding that there'll have to be a second, second motion, that will be the nomination of the different personnel to be on the Economic Development Authority.
You're suggesting taking out the paragraph D.
I'm thinking, talking about taking out all of, all of February, and then referring that to the Economic Development Authority. I said, let them develop those guidelines, rather than I spend another hour and a half to go back through all the details. And then they bring it back to the council, and the council will approve.
Exactly.
Could someone explain to me again, because I think you've already done this one.
No, no, it's quite all right.
Why we need this at all? At that business roundtable, no one spoke about that we need more lodging, you know, we need, you know, everyone talked about sidewalks, they talked about accessibility. And it didn't seem like for business people, this was a big issue. And so, I'm just wondering, why we're paying so much attention to it?
So, I, two things on that point. One, the thing that they did bring up, right, is the idea that it'd be nice to have more, more things for people to do in town, and so, so that let me down specifically. We want to set aside doing anything about lodging, specifically a retail space or additional restaurants, retailer restaurants. So, that started our conversation in my mind about how to do that. Now, I personally think that we should also do something for all of our units in town. And that's, as I said in my inaugural address, is I think it's important to encourage the folks who are already providing a substantial amount, providing all the money, nearly all the money we use to operate.
Okay, all right.
Might I add that the question we're asked very often by visitors is, what is the town doing for visitors? Not so much what the town's doing for the owners of businesses. So, is there a legal requirement in taking on through lodging tax to at least put some of it back toward benefiting the visitor to the town? I'm asking Mr. Krim.
So, not in town. In counties, there, the meals and lodging tax are constrained in how they may be spent, how that revenue may be spent. When, in counties, those taxes have to be spent in large departments for tourism or movement. That description does not apply to towns. When the, when the patron pays the tax, and pays it to the hotel or restaurant, and those entities then remit that tax to the town, because the town's money, all along that process, from the, at least the patron's hands, to spend however you provide.
Just to finish on the, on the why of the EDA, so, so if we do want to do that, if we as a council want to encourage any of those two things, new restaurants, new restaurants, encourage all of our units to grow, the only way, I've gone back and forth quite a bit, the only way where a town will be able to do that, we cannot, on our own authority, create a tax rebate or, or create a grant. The Commonwealth requires us to create an Economic Development Authority that will administer those rebates and grants. And so, that's what started this down, this road, the discussion of the EDA. So, assuming that we want to do those investments, you know, in, in additional things for folks to do when they're in town, to encourage growth in our business community, then we have to create an EDA to enable that. I think it's perfectly good point from Fred to say that we can, Fred not asking Mr. Krim the question beforehand, it separates a, letting the EDA come back, this is what they think is the best legislature that you spend time on. You just, a number of ideas that have all came around prior to our.
And they're good ideas.
I think we need to all speak up a little louder.
I'm sorry, Nancy.
I'm getting all the back.
I apologize, yes.
None of us have. None of us, we can't be done.
Right, yeah. So, yeah, I, yeah, I, yeah, so that's what started the conversation. I wanted to be able to do something, and this is the way, I think, to talk to you all of you individually at different times, I think, relative to consistency with what I've heard. I think, I personally think that should include all, I mean, all of our businesses in town, absolutely all of them. These are points to start a conversation. Have to do the direction folks want to, I mean, I think, heard my inaugural, I think we should do something for all those entities, everybody in town, to encourage growth. If the sense is that we want to move ahead, answer, you're right, we've got to separate the three questions, right? So, I think if we want to move ahead with an EDA, then we should, we should do that to enable us to have further conversations about tax, tax incentives and grants. Then we need to decide who the initial board's going to be for that EDA. But at the same time, we could do that and then separate, come back next month or the month after, whenever they get a chance, and organize themselves and have a discussion about what specifically the recommendations are for investments in our business.
Mr. Krim, do we have to have a public hearing on creating this?
So, you have a motion that's been proposed.
To create the EDA. Mr. Mark, if that's.
Do we have to do both, the nomination and the?
Yeah, Robert's Rules of Order says normally blanks and pending motions should be filled before the motion itself is voted on. And if I could give you a little bit more detail, it might be helpful, filling in the number of blanks, because that's not something we do every day. Filling a blank with names, reading from Robert's Rules of Order. The following principles apply to the process of filling a blank with one or more names. A, the procedure for filling a blank with one name is practically the same as for making nominations. Chair repeats each name as it is proposed, and finally takes a vote on each in that same order until one receives a majority. B, if the blank is to be filled with more than one name, and no more are suggested than are required, the names are deemed inserted by unanimous consent. So, if you have seven names, and you agree on who gets what length of term, then that's unanimous consent. C, if more names are suggested than are required, the chair takes a vote on each in the order of his proposal until enough to fill the blank have received a majority vote. The names remaining in the list is. The names remaining in the list as proposed are ignored since the assembly has decided which names shall fill the blank. Then D, if the number of names is not specified, the chair takes a vote on each name suggested, and all names approved by majority vote are inserted. So that, D would not apply here. So what I would suggest is that if you have a slate, if somebody has a slate of names that they want to propose of years, that might be an efficient and helpful way of proceeding.
I think that Joe, one point, Tom, you had told him that a certain number of these people are town officials and a certain number are not, or there's some kind of balance there?
That's correct. You cannot have a majority of town officials on the EDA board. So that means council members cannot, only three, no more than three council members can be on the EDA board.
Is it required to have any?
No.
No.
It would seem far more equitable to have a separate board that was not mentioned, made up of town council.
I think that my concern there is, I think, it's hard to find seven people to meet for the town council, other than have seven to do most-
Exactly.
Well, this may get different, the problem with the conflicts of interest with business owners and hospitality owners within the town.
In that case, people just have to refuse themselves.
Yeah.
I would sort of agree with Patrick that as much as possible, we want to have citizens of the town, this rather than members of the town council or any other, the county planning commission. I also think for just the perception, it's going to be better if it's a different group.
Different group of solicitation, people who want service in the EDA?
That certainly, one thing that the localities do is to request applications from people who are interested in serving.
So we could eliminate number two with the names, get it created.
This town council still has to appoint members.
Right. So one thing I would offer is, if presuming, Martin, that we have to name them as we create the EDA, I have a slate of names I want to put codes solely for the purpose of getting it created. And then we can revise that as needed, I suppose, or we can have members of the government step aside as we have citizens who are willing to join. This would be solely to give it in function. Do we have to name them at the same time we're creating it, or can we create it and name them later?
So, interesting, can you have the body with no members? He's outside, that's a tough question.
Right, yeah, chicken and egg.
Yeah, I think that what you would probably want to do, if you don't want to have the names tonight, is to solicit applications from individuals who are interested in serving. And then, when those come in, you can handle them however you like, private interviews, public interviews, and then proceed in that fashion.
Well, if we had additional people from the town who want to participate in one-on-one that could replace-
They could replace the current ones.
The council members.
So I would probably have to make a solicitation.
Quite awesome. Are these the terms, are they something that is legally set?
Yes.
Okay, four years, seems like quite a commitment.
Of course, and the option to resign.
For time served. Time indentured served too, you do get the leave if you want to, but yeah, the two people for one year, two people for two, two people for three, and one person for four years, all set out in statute.
For the sake of debate, I would put forward a set of names, and decide whether we want to move forward with those names or defer on names.
Mr. Mayor, I may add. I would suppose that we, for the sake of, there have been a lot of questions up. I want to get this done as quickly as possible. But I would propose that we defer this for one month. And I am reluctant to even say this, but that will allow that you or someone that you want to delegate to assist to go over, clean up the resolution with all the different parts that we want to have, give us a chance to send out a letter to people in the town who would like to propose themselves as nominees, and then we can come up with a slate and have everything cleaned at our next meeting.
I would agree with that. Now, I think if we have names here, it's going to be very hard to see what's going to be, because it looks like it's only filled.
Just give me, have them like application.
I do have two names that I would love to mention, that agree to serve, and that I would presume would nominate themselves again if I asked the second time, which would be John Fox Sullivan and Klaus Peters. To fill two of those.
Mr. Peters is the owner of B and B, is incorrect. We don't anticipate a conflict of interest.
He can step back. You only need four members to vote in the affirmative for action, so you've got lots of trade space for those who are conflicted, but it seems to me, I would, I'd argue, if he wants to, or wants to be elected, as well.
Well, I would consider it as a potential conflict of interest. So if there's even a suggestion of conflict of interest, we have a problem.
But on the other hand, you want to have representation from your businesses in the community. I mean, they may not be able to vote because of conflict of interest, but it's important to hear their perspective, and their representation.
Does it have to be as complex as it's laid out to be? Couldn't three people just be the board and have the recommendation to the town council?
Sadly, no, not without a statutory amendment. There are some localities that are allowed to have smaller boards, but everybody else in the Commonwealth, they've probably got a seven-member board.
And in order to get a smaller board, I understand that we have to go in front of the general assembly?
That's correct.
I'm talking about four percent of our community.
Yeah.
On the doors.
There should be an exception.
The initial conversation, just the conversation I had with Mr. Krim, to fill a board would be three members, just to get it created. It would be to fill the board with three members of the council. I would offer, I would suggest myself, the vice mayor, and Ms. Dine, as potentially those three members, and then to have the chair of the ARB and the chair of the planning commission with the other two members to fill it for seven, total with Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Peters. That was the slate that I had sort of come up with as a way to get us going, in a way.
Do four voting members and the two product managers of the council?
Yeah, right. Because obviously, we've got different points and different people couldn't vote, but we'll still maintain a four-vote. And get considerable influence of the elected body that represents the town in both camps. I'll just throw that out there for consideration. I'm perfectly happy to say we should put out a broader call for folks who are interested in creating town. That was the slate I was prepared to offer, and I think there's some conversations I made with folks.
And did you have a motion on the floor to postpone?
I don't know if I had done it as a motion as much as a conversation, something I was going to bring up. I really wanted to get a sense from other members of the council, what they felt.
That's the whole reason we pulled this up tonight, right? Because there have been a lot of individual conversations, but none of it had actually been in public or in record. So I wanted to get that started.
It seems that we really have two ways to go forward. It seems that all of us have some questions, have some concerns, have some things that we want to have answered. The question is whether you want to set up the instrument tonight and put a preliminary group of people on it as part of setting up the instrument tonight, and let them go and dig out the details. Or whether you want to leave it, unfortunately, it will fall on the shoulders of the mayor to kind of pull something together, getting feedback again from members of the council individually, and then come up with something that we are going to have to look back at again at the main meeting, and then there may be more discussions then, and then it may end up going on to a June meeting and so on and so forth. So, and knowing now that he has a slate, I would propose, I guess I would make him go back to my original motion, which is to go with the ordinance as written, excluding section three, and to have as part of a motion that the established economic development authority meet, develop the specific criteria and any other issues that need to be done, bring it back to the town council. I would, as part of that motion, I would defer to the mayor's slate as he has it, knowing that we'll be able to begin moving people off after you. You know, I still follow the gene. If you've got a slate, then let's, you can send it for some of the stuff up and say, well, I want to take the position. I think, like you said, I think, let's put it back, let's clean this up, let's advertise and see what type of interest, we might have more interest than we think. I would not support going forward tonight. I'd rather, let's do a little more cleanup work, let's see who has, who show interest. You know, we do have some other people in town that, you know, may not be in the retail sector, we have no real, you know, one who is serving, you know, our architectural people who might be interested in this role. So, push. So we may have some that says, yeah, I'd be interested in that. You know, maybe we don't purge them if we want, if they can. So I'd rather postpone this, because, let me ask Mr. Krim, does this have to be fully planned, this, all this have to be done before the start of the new fiscal year?
No, sir.
Okay. So if we did roll past July, and it rolled into August, fine, but at least we have it the way it should be, and we're not making changes or compromises where we really don't want any compromises.
I think we can get this done in May. Not a problem.
Let's see, let's see what other responsibility, people want to serve.
Because we have a fallback of your slate.
Yeah, we do have a fallback. Yeah, but in the meantime, the document itself, order itself to be cleaned up.
Well, we're striking that section, so the cleanup's pretty straightforward. I would argue.
That's easy.
Yeah, but what we can see on the proposed document, you know, you could have the names in there, so it is a more formally comprehensive document. What can we- So I want to hear, because I'm hearing some consensus. So what I'm hearing is that we would put off for a month, allow applications to come in, then we would approve the ordinance with the applications, and then defer to the EDA to create the specifics.
Yeah.
Does that sound like consensus going on?
I don't want to go past anything on that.
Yeah.
I'm hesitant to slow down. I feel like this slate of folks that have been proposed is a good proof representative that they're inclined to do the job and do it well. Would there be any way for folks to formally express interest after a slate had been named to participate on the EDA?
No, there's no process for a call for this or anything like that. Certainly, in a public meeting, people can come to the public meetings and speak if the EDA allows it, the board allows public comment, then they can certainly speak.
And there would be nothing against, I mean, I'm thinking two or three separate people. Let's say we go with a slate, and with the knowledge that there are going to be several people on there that are temporary, and that we don't say it, then we could go, I could go to blank and say, we really need you on this, we did this, you get a slate done, get it going.
Wouldn't it be just easier not to have a slate? And go to the person on the side we need to work on this, rather than, we have the slate already, but we'd like you to take the situation's position?
Mr. Krim, if I can ask one other question. Is the seven also the ceiling for the number of members?
Yes. I like that idea of just have it as a slate with people. And two of the people, no matter what, two of these people have to step down, or what their terms are within the first year that it's created. My, any caution I would offer, well, is that, you know, yes, June is fine, sure, but that's, you know, already halfway through a fiscal year. If we want to demonstrate that we are committed to bringing business, promoting business in this town, and we're going to kick the can down the road for two or three more months, rather than taking action, you know. Whether that's the perfect solution or not, I think the idea that we're demonstrating forward motion, that we are moving forward, is important, the momentum is important. We know, I know, that we have businesses who are interested in opening restaurants in the town, but are holding their breath because they don't know what we're going to do about taxes and grants to help them get their business started. And these are local business owners who want to do business here. The longer we drag it out, the longer, you know, if we lose opportunity, it's not free to kick the can down the road, is my point. It's not free to the town, it's not free to the community, it's not free to our business owners.
And that sounds like a powerful intent to go back to the original motion, go with your slate.
I think, actually, we've discussed enough, haven't we? Can you have a motion?
I have the motion to go ahead and go with the ordinance with the names that the mayor proposes, and the terms that he proposes, and strike out paragraph three, and require the newly formed EDA to address the issues of criteria, and the criteria for amounts and criteria for awards, for whether it's awards, rebate, or whatever they're going to do, and then bring it back to the town council for their approval. And I don't know if the EDA would be able to resolve all that by the time of May meeting, but certainly by the June meeting. We'll give that as a deadline, put that as part of the motion. Or, I hope you got all that down. I'm not going to-
I did, but just a clarification, included in his motion, he needs, it needs to be stated whom for what term, paragraph.
That's correct, and there's another blank there in paragraph two as well, because it's the start date. So, Mr. Mayor, when you restate the motion, perhaps you could restate it with the start date in blank two, and then the names for the one, two, three, and four-year terms?
I will make a motion to, a motion to create an economic development authority effective as of this meeting, and with terms for the members of that authority beginning on 11 April 2023. And the members of the board, or the authority board consists of, for a term of one year, Mr. Klaus Peters, for a term of one year, Mr. John Fox Sullivan, for a term of two years, Ms. Deb Harris, for a term of two years, Ms. Caroline Anse, Anse, sorry, Caroline, for a term of three years, Ms. Jeanne Dine, for a term of three years- Caroline, for a term of three years, Ms. Jeanne DeDine, for a term of three years, Mr. Fred Catlin, and for a term of four years, Mr. Joe Weller.
I will second that motion.
I'll call for a roll call vote. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
No.
I would abstain because of any inference of conflict of interest.
I vote yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
As it is a summary, I feel like we can stay as long.
And I'm sorry, I did not hear the gene, so.
I heard them though.
No, thank you.
So I'll make a.
Motion, please. I have a substitute motion.
I'll make a second, I'll make another motion, and that is that we go ahead and send out a notice for applicants for the Economic Development Authority that we then bring up, I guess, the motion is to bring back the EDA for discussion at the main meeting, at which time we will have had time for people to apply, that we will then be able to have a slate of people from which to choose, including the ones that the mayor has proposed. And then we will leave it to the Economic Development Authority, I'm sorry, basically, sorry, let me start that motion over. We will go ahead and ask for nominations to the Economic Development Authority, which we anticipate will be approved at the main meeting. I think we keep it short and simple.
Yep.
That's good.
I'm second. Pass. Roll call vote?
Yes.
Obstain.
Yes.
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 Do we have, I think we should put, do we have a deadline on the applicants? Do we need to bottom that or send them first?
Yeah.
I will add, I will invite an amendment to the motion.
To require the applications to be submitted no later than May 1st?
Or April 30.
April 30.
April 30 is just easier because people think of me.
Oh, okay.
Who made the second on the original motion?
Brad.
It was a class.
So, sorry.
No, that's okay. All in favor of the amended motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion is adopted. All right, I have one final bit of official business before we get out of here. Fred, we passed a really nice resolution in your honor back in January, and finally got it.
Hey. Thank you very much.
Suitable for hanging on your. With that, I will accept entertain motions to adjourn.
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I will open the public forum. Yes, ma'am?
I'm really glad that you did not vote a slate of what first, because I wanted to nominate myself, so you would have eliminated me from that process. And maybe, I'm a business owner in town, nobody knows about me because I live in my basement where my business is run out of. But I would think that we need representation of more than just PMEs, and so, and we'll first. My second point is, I would like to see an ordinance that bans fireworks in the town of Washington, and I'm wondering what you're doing about that.
We don't currently have any legislation under consideration about banning.
I hope that you take that up soon.
Thank you, appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming tonight. That will close the, oh, I'm sorry. Apologize.
Will the EDA have the power to give tax relief incentive?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a grant by the council.
The grant is completely different than a tax relief incentive, right? That would more of a.
It's a little bit of a debate, but it's.
He's the one of the other.
Yeah, but yes, it would have the, potentially approved by the council, if it had any number of powers to provide a tax relief or tax subsidies or grants, presumably approved by the council.
The EDA is all our here?
Yes. And I think one thing we didn't sort of air earlier was about the membership. One member can be from outside EDA.
Any number can be from Rappahanna County.
I think we're all from Rappahannock County, but any can be residents who reside outside the town.
Not town residents, but county residents.
Got it.
There's one.
Any number.
Any number, yeah, yeah. I thought it was one, but yeah, any number, I was thinking ARDS. ARDS numbers.
Right.
Okay. Okay, apologize, what do you, anything else? All right, in that case, I will close the public forum, and now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Absolutely.
All right, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.